All right, this time we're going to call to order a budget hearing of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Thursday, May the 20th at 5:30 PM at the Franklin County Justice Center here in Carpsville, Georgia. We note for the record, we have a quorum consisting of all Commissioners present for this afternoon's hearing. We want to welcome everyone and thank you for joining us. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to present the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget for the county. We'll also open the floor for public comments on the budget. Before we begin, though, we need to amend and approve tonight's agenda to add Item 2A, invocation and pledge to the flag, and also add Item 3-1B, public comment. We inadvertently left that off of, or those items off the agenda. So this time is their motion to amend and approve tonight's budget, or I'm sorry, tonight's agenda.
I make a motion that we amend tonight's agenda to include Item 2A, invocation and pledge to the flag, and also to add Item 3-1B for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wells has made the motion to amend and approve the agenda as we stated. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion to amend tonight's agenda to add Items 2A, invocation and pledge to the flag, and Item 3-1B, public comment, and approve the agenda signified by raising your right hand? All those opposed, same sign? Motion will carry four to zero, and the agenda is amended and approved. So this time, we're going to have an invocation, and then we want to ask you to remain standing and join us in the pledge. So please stand.
Let's pray. Your Lord, we thank you for yet another opportunity to come together in service to the county. We pray that you give us some wisdom tonight as we're looking over this agenda and trying to determine how to best use the resources that we have here in this county to provide the most benefit to the taxpayers of the county. We love you, and we thank you for just this beautiful day, and then we pray.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the next item on the agenda is the proposed budget for fiscal year 2022. So we're going to turn this over to our county manager, Mr. Turner, and he's going to present the budget for us.
All right, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. All right, so what we'll talk about tonight is just looking at our proposed budget. This is the first of three budget hearings that we'll have. So we do have opportunity. This is not the set and stone number, but this is a point to just take a look at kind of where we are and sort of where we want to go. We'll talk about revenues, we'll talk about revenues, our expenditures, power planning. We have a couple of departments that are going to talk about some bigger ticket items that we have as far as expenditures, either operating capital or capital planning overall. We'll talk about personnel. We'll talk a little bit about the mileage rate as well. So we'll talk broadly about mileage because, of course, we don't have the total digest at this time. That usually comes about mid-June. And you do have copies of the budget in front of you. The green paper that you have is the revenues and the black and white of grayscale are the expenditures that are in front of you. This is a little bit hard to see on the screen, but as you're looking at that, that's the revenues. Essentially, with our revenues, this is just giving us what our FY '22 projected is, so like $15,509,510 versus our FY '21 current budget year. If you go back for a couple more years, FY 2020 budgeted and actual with FY '19 budgeted and actual as well. This is just giving you a comparative look to see exactly what we've done overall. I had it broken down on this particular slide by the fund, but what you have is the total budget line by line going through those same exact categories. So as you kind of see with our projected FY '22 budget versus the current year budget, we're pretty well standing relatively flat. We're talking about about a million dollars increase. I guess if you think about the overall, what that impact is, is a relatively small number. So I say relatively flat because there's not some huge increase that we're talking about. We're talking about some slight increases in revenue out of various areas. Again, as you're looking at, well, by fund, the 215 funded 911 fund, we're talking about practically about a $60,000 increase to what that overall revenue budget is versus the current year. Pro Bay, we're looking at a slight drop at this moment. We'll go back and reevaluate just a little bit more to see if there's any trend or anything that shows us that it should be slightly different. And kind of the reason, just quickly on Pro Bay, that it's a little bit lower in the projected budget, as you can kind of see from this, is if you look at the year-over-year actuals versus what the budgets were, I faced it, a little bit more off of the actual usage. So it just brings us a little bit more in line with what we've actually been accruing revenue-wise to this point over the last three years. And we're probably still on that pace for this year as well. I just included slots in this just because, just to add it there because it is a major revenue. We're pretty well getting to the end of our slot five as well. We'll be seeing the end of that coming soon, so we have a little bit more usage within that. So budget is slightly higher as we see sort of everything open back up. So as we do get back outside of COVID and everything's opening back up, I do project just a little bit higher. We don't want to go too far with our revenues as far as any increases that we think may be there, though. We want to try to stay a little bit more to the conservative side of that, just so that we aren't overprojecting, because obviously, there could always be a projected next wave of COVID. There could be anything that could happen, so we don't want to overproject ourselves as far as some of these revenues are going. Looking at our water fund, a little bit down as far as the water fund projected right now. Again, that's more normalization, bringing us closer to where we've been with our actuals year-over-year versus the budget. Solid waste funds, 540 fund, that one, again, a little bit higher than what's projected. I think that we will see just a slight increase in that fund, but that is a smaller fund for us, so we're talking about an increase of about $4,000 in budget items. So when you're talking about all of our funds, for the projected FY '22 budget, then we're talking about $22,997,600. In total, we're talking about about $300, or sorry, $500,000 more than what the current FY '21 year's budget is. So again, we're staying relatively flat. What you'll see within the line items is you'll just see a little bit of movement, just how I would call that normalization, where we've maybe been budgeted in some areas and maybe it hasn't been coded to that area, maybe it was coding improperly, maybe it wasn't something that we actually used, but some of that money just essentially shifted. So you essentially see the same number to a high degree, but it's just in the proper areas. So I would say that's more normalization than anything with us having just about a half a million dollar difference. Again, we're going conservative on these numbers. We don't want to overbudget and sort of overextend ourselves and not reach those figures. So we'll stay relatively flat as far as what the revenue budget is. Questions on revenues? One more. This is just a quick graph, just to kind of show where revenues are. It still follows that basic principle of FY '22 projected to the FY '21 budgeted, '20 budgeted actual, '19 budgeted actual, just to give a representation of kind of the ups and downs and how that looks. So the side-by-sides of '20, '19, show what your budgeted versus your actual were. Side-by-side of the '22 projected and the current year, the FY '21, just shows you the difference between current year versus projected next year. So just to give a little bit of an illustration to that. So you see FY '20 fell a little bit short, not very much with FY '19 being over. So this gets us to where we're a little bit more even with what I think we're going to do, so we're a little bit more on par with what FY '21 was projected. So this is just another representation, just showing what the revenues trend is. This is just going through actuals all the way down to projected. It's a little bit skewed because of FY '20 being such, so far overbudgeted, so it does skew it just a little bit. If you do take out the FY '20 actual to more of a regular number, and that'll take that along together, you're going to probably see more of a flat line in this case. And it shows a little bit of downward trend, but that is more projected by the increase in FY '20. So it shows FY '19, '20, FY '21 budget, and then the '22 projected, which shows us the shift throughout. So yeah, we just want to make sure that we're staying relatively flat when we're talking about budget, unless there's something that we know for sure is going to happen if there was a huge industrial customer, or so we're asked to get into the situation of subdivisions, that might be something that we look at to say, we know these subdivisions are going to be built. What's the number? What's the overall factor? I'd probably say just as far as the county is concerned, whether it's not talking about a huge subdivision or a huge amount of housing at this particular moment, we probably want to still stay relatively flat. If we're talking about rebuilding 300, 400 houses or something in that ballpark, that's something that we want to project on and kind of understand what the phases are of that building and that construction. To them, we can probably put more into the budget, but since we're kind of right now in the 50 to 75-ish kind of number overall, we can be pretty safe being flat with that number.
Are our projections for this year, are they on track? Are we going to end up there or above or below, do you think, for 2021?
Yeah, so I think with our '21, I think we're going to be pretty well on par for where we've been over the past couple of years. I think we should fall under on the expenditure side of things. I think revenue side, I think we should be pretty close to meeting that number. Any other revenue questions? All right, I'll jump to expenditures. So again, it's in that same format that we saw before with the revenues. This is just to give a representation of what the funds look like, all major funds and minor funds. So the expenditures, we actually do a really great job, I think, with our departments of making sure that they are looking at cost savings, doing the things that they can do to not necessarily meet that budget goal. It's okay if we aren't hitting that number that we budgeted expenditure-wise. We just want to make sure that as we are going through the course of our years, departments, that we're watching those numbers. So with this year being budgeted 14.5 million, we're going to project just a little bit more, and that tracks a little bit more with the increases that we had in revenues alongside of that, the 15.1 with our projected average annual fund. We'll still be relatively flat again with the 911, just a slight decrease in that from about 918,000 to 897,000. Still, again, with Pro Bay, about the same, 802,000 to 787,000. We'll categorize that a little bit later in the budget hearing, but we'll have a few things to talk through with that one in particular. With the same with the side-by-side, water, 2.6 million to about 3.2 million. The difference in about $600,000 that we have there is what I calculated for unclassified chief of payments. So there were the payments that were in there, and they're in the budget. They weren't budgeted, but they were paid. So it essentially just shows that there was a zero budget, but whatever that number was as far as what the payment was. So that's the difference in showing that $600,000, to make sure we're capturing that number. Just important that we are trying to capture, especially in those huge numbers like that. We don't want to jump over the top of those and not capture those, because it just greatly skewed what we're doing as far as the expenditures. Also, solid waste going from 101 to about 90. We've been under as far as our expenditures within there. And as you do go through the chart again, you'll see that this more normalizes what our actual usage has been over the past about three years. Looking at all your funds, right now, we're at a balance. So the number that we had in revenues is the same amount that we have total funds for our expenditures at this moment, and we essentially want to be at that point always, is either be balanced or revenue above. But this will put us just at about $550,000 more in expenditures. So again, you can probably attribute a good chunk of that to unclassified lump payments. All right, continuing on with expenditures, so the same chart format is what is laid out there for expenditures. So what that's going to show is just a side-by-side comparison of what FY '22 projected is against FY '21 budgeted, and then the '20 budgeted and actual, and the '19 budgeted and actual. So a little bit higher than '19, you can kind of see there. Higher than '19, under than '20. So same type of slide presentation, looking at your expenditure trends. So this is again backwards, so starting at '19 and working our way back to what's budgeted. You can start to see an actual, this is an actual representation, this is going to show that we're on a downward trend as far as our expenditures. We don't necessarily want to think as far as just downward trend on expenditures, because if there are increases in revenues, that can trigger an increase in expenditures. So if we ever are in a situation where we do see those increase or a rise of those, the question is going to be a little bit more towards what is triggering that. It's not necessarily a bad thing, so to speak. All right, any expenditure or expense questions? Anybody now? All right, so we'll talk a little bit about capital planning, and like I mentioned, we have a couple of departments that are going to just talk briefly about some requests that they do have. These requests aren't included in the budget at this time. It will take us, saying that it's something that we do want to proceed on. I think as far as kind of my thoughts as we're doing budget presentations year-over-year, I think the big thing for the board might be that as you're looking at operating, if operating is staying relatively flat, the important thing will be to look at then what those major expenditures are, what those major differences are within the budget, and that usually does fall into your either operating capital or other capital that you may have. So you have a little bit of operating capital today that we'll talk about. We will talk a little bit more about some of the big ticket items that we may have in the future, like talking about being in one government building, what that can mean for us. We are still working on compiling information, so we sort of know what that means cost-wise. I'm still getting information in, and as soon as I have the totality of that information, then we can talk about that. Other things to talk about is talking about radios, kind of overall, whether it be with the public safety or any other areas. We want to talk about radios, and there might be a collaboration with the entirety of the county, including the cities, to take a look at going digital. That is a very big ticket item that I know is always there, and we're in a situation now, so we're having analog. They no longer make the replacement parts for analog radios. So we're kind of in a situation where we could probably get by for a little bit of time, come up with a plan of what we want to do, and then from there, we're going to need to do that, I would think, within maybe the next, I guess, three to four years, maybe. I don't have an exact timeline to that, but I think that's something that we might want to think about, working in conjunction with the cities to see, you know, is everybody still on analogs? Can we work out a plan and use our buying power as a full county to switch over to digital radios? So that would be something that I'll try to engage the cities in here in the next several months. Also, just thinking about vehicles, we will have Enterprise Rent-A-Car come and speak at the work session briefly, just to kind of talk about what their programming is. We have some options with that and other vendors that can do that as well, but we'll just look at that as options as far as being able to renew and replenish our fleet. So that can be something that we do. It's not something that we must do at this time, but another kind of long-range planning item that we want to think about as far as how we're doing things and then allocating that capital funding.
Quick question on that. Do you know, because your history back with Lawrenceville, did they have that, or did they own their own vehicles, or was it a mixture of both?
So we looked at Enterprise there, but they do own outright. So in that case, that was a replacement program I created. Allocation to that was about 1.2 billion per year, so about 28 to 32 vehicles a year, something in that ballpark. It can be something, and that can be something that we look at as well, to say, do we want to just do that in-house and replacing that at our own pace? But this just gives us some options.
How many do you think we would be replacing every year on that kind of program?
Well, we, he has a model, so he has a couple of models that can run. It's really still up to us if, as far as how many we want to replace. For them, they're usually a little bit more aggressive to where they'll start off slow in the first year, and then that increases to, say, 30 to 40, depending on your fleet age. So that's a little bit where they're projecting it is now. I wouldn't be a fan of necessarily jumping that kind of number to say we're replacing 15 and then going to 30.
How many do we, how many cars do we have, or vehicles? Do you know?
I don't remember it right offhand. I haven't collected this information to Enterprise, but it's a situation where owning outright is fine, and sometimes with smaller municipalities, that can be okay, because you probably keep them longer. But of course, with having vehicles on the highway and whatnot, those vehicles are going to obtain mileage at a much quicker pace. So kind of the goal within Enterprise is they're looking to replace their vehicles before they get old, I guess is sort of the nuts and bolts to that.
If they need to be fixed, do they handle that, exchanging, or maintenance?
So we would handle, we would handle maintenance. We'd handle maintenance. But essentially, and I'll kind of let you talk to the basics of it, but essentially, it's you purchasing the vehicle or, I guess, kind of leasing the vehicle, they're going to sell it back at a quicker rate for a higher price than what typically we would do. So instead of us keeping it for 150,000 miles, selling it to another municipality or going to go deals for $2,000, they might have turned, sold it at 75,000 miles and sold it for $10,000. It is kind of a trade-off of theirs. But he'll walk us through the entirety of their program. Like I said, it's not something that we must do, but it's something just to look at as an option.
This includes Sheriff's Department and all vehicles?
Absolutely. I know currently, LaGuardia is in contract with Enterprise to do this. So again, this could be another opportunity that we'd look at if we didn't do it in this moment, that we look at partnering with some of the other municipalities within the county to say, you know, can we get a better deal? Can they replace more at a time? What is that structure? I mean, I know it's a little more complicated when we're talking about, you know, kind of us being an umbrella, but I think it's worth having a conversation just to see what's possible, what they can do for us. Because instead of LaGuardia having just singulately their buying power, we're talking about the county's buying power and the multitude. So I think if we start to try to look at some things like that, we're able to accomplish that, and it works out and makes sense, that might be some things that we want to look at in the future with multitude of capital items. All right, so with that, I will turn it over. The clerk of court is here, and she will introduce herself in case you don't know her, and she's going to talk through an item that she has for the budget.
I'm Heather Hill. I want to talk to you today about historical indexing in our office and trying to get everything online as far as our deeds go. Right now, we have, we just got all our Platts online, thanks to the Clark's Authority, and we are in the durnage of getting our deeds online. Everything's a little bit, I'm going to say, outdated, and I'm afraid that if anything drastic happens in our office, a leak, tornado, a fire, or anything like that happens, then I'm just going to say we may be at a creek as far as damage to our files go. This will also index it so that anybody that is trying to come to search in our office will be able to search from home. Title searchers, attorneys, anything like that, they'll be able to, you know, help search it. This will help generate revenue for the county because the copies that come from CoFile, which is the company that, I can't see that little sheet. CoFile is the company that actually comes and does all the imaging for our office, and they'll actually give you the copy money back for that. So whenever someone goes and makes a copy, we'll actually get the copy money back and we'll really get it to the county. That's exactly how we do it with the Clark's Authority as of right now, and so I think that it'll benefit us as far as money goes for the county. They just came out, I told you that they just came out and did the Platts. They did that within a two-week period, so it's really quick and it's really convenient, again, for all the searchers. The, it's a little pricey if you look at it altogether. Obviously, that there says $100,000, which really is around 78 to 80 for the two, for the two projects. They're able to split those projects up into four years, so it ends up bringing it down to about 18,000 or 19,000, close to there. So that's obviously, I mean, I would say doable as far as if we're looking, I mean, not-
Over four years?
Over four years, if there. And if you guys, you know, do make the decision to pass this, then obviously, it's something that would help not just me in my office, but, you know, others outside the office, including the county workers, that, you know, that would, it would be beneficial for you, for them as well. CoFile, we can call them on a daily basis, and they're able to help us within, you know, 30 minutes. And they'll, they'll come out, I have a good relationship with their, with our vendor or their account manager. He comes out, he's actually from Haversham, and he'll come out, like if we need him or something's going on, he's really easy to get in touch with and will be beneficial for us. The other day, about two weeks ago, we had seven title searchers in our room, in our D-room, and because we just opened that back up without appointment, that is very, I don't know if you've ever been in our D-room, but it's extremely tight, and I just think it would be beneficial for them to be able, not that we don't love people, we love people, but we want them to be able to access the accessible, our office to be accessible. If anyone in our real estate side wants to get sick, they can, you know, they can help from home, or they can get Platts from home. As far as the courthouse, if there's any drastic sickness that happens, again, you know, COVID going on, title searchers, they do go to County D-County, so this would actually help as far as the sickness goes. And it's also stored in three different places. I know that on, on the sheet that you have, it talks about how you can, it talks about how it's backed up. You can see that there's one in Texas, there's one maybe in Alabama. It goes on into detail about how they're, they're in three different places. I just think that this is beneficial, plus the counties surrounding us actually do this already. I think we're way behind when it comes to this. We've just now got debit cards, and so, you know, I think, you know, that's been out since 2010, so this has been out, you know, for a good five years, and I think that we're way behind when it comes to this. Raven, Haversham, Hall Banks, Madison Heart, Elbert, O'Gorman, and Clark County all have this, or are in the process of getting this as of speak. This right here is a picture of Hancock County. I don't know if you can see that? That's their fire that they had. She didn't lose everything because she actually went in and was pressing for this, just like I am, and I'm not really sure why this is on the heart, but I feel like it's needed. So as far as the county goes, I do feel like we would benefit from this program, and I respectfully ask it for you to tell me all of that. Do you have any questions for me? Or do you need any more details?
So the two projects, how do you want, how do you see us doing that, like all at one time, or how would we spread it out if you're talking about over four years?
So the, this, the first one, which is, let me get to the historical one. The historical one, the historical indexing one of the deeds, not the grant or guarantee, but the actual, the big, the 78,000 one, is actually the one that we would need to break up into four years. I believe budget-wise, I would be able to put this into my budget, the small one, and be okay. And process that per month, because you can see that the per-month payment is really small. I'm mainly worried about that imaging one. And if, that's the one I'm going to go with first, obviously, because I think that I can handle this if you guys can help me with the other. And I think it was originally brought for when we first received money, when, with the COVID.
For cares.
Yeah, and so, but Missy brought it forward then, and I think that it was actually, everybody was- And I think that it was actually, everyone was like, yes, it's a good idea, it's a good idea. But then, but it was going to be within the second amount of money. And we ended up getting that, is what I understand.
The, they, they did talk about the first one, which was twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Because originally it had been a lot higher estimate and they came down on it.
They did, they closed the break.
But it just didn't go anywhere at least last fall.
Right. He said it was because I was asleep, so.
I think you might have mentioned, but what did they say the timeframe is for them to accomplish this records transfer?
The Platts, there weren't, there weren't as many Platts as there would have been deeds. And it took them about two weeks. So I'd say a month, maybe.
And that's for the first project or the second one?
Sir?
That's for the first project or the second one or all of it?
That's the big project, yeah.
Okay. So they would do it and then you would take four years to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So, but it would all be done upfront?
It would, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. As long as we sign that, as long as we sign a contract saying that we're, you know, liable for COVID.
And as far as the service goes, do they charge an annual service to provide tech support? Or have you mentioned some guy that's kind of?
We're already, they're already our vendor. And so basically, or you're maybe on our side like the.
Yeah, I guess with CoFile, as far as, are they adding any additional cost?
Is there an annual fee?
No, we always pay an annual fee. I'm not one hundred percent sure exactly what that fee is. I can get that for you as soon as possible, depending on people's say.
On this, on this one thing, it says setup fee and first year maintenance sixty-five hundred. Is that?
It's included. Everything that you're reading.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see.
Included in the contract.
I see that, I see that. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I, I do feel like this is something that we do need to seriously consider. Because if, if one thing that the old schoolhouse in Sandy Cross Fire taught us, is that when these old buildings, if they catch on fire.
They're gone.
They're gone in a hurry. And that, that courthouse, I mean, Lord, I hope nothing would ever happen to it. But if something was, it would be really tough to get that put out and, and save much of what's in there, so.
Are all the clerk of court records stored there or are they spread in other locations?
We actually have some older clerk records that are actually in the old middle school building. But they were, we would only get back to nineteen seventy because it's a fifty-year search, basically. Anything before that will be sent to the archives.
So that was, that's those records over there?
Mm-hmm, it's like nineteen, nineteen hundreds.
Okay.
Eighteen hundreds, eighteen old.
Do you, do you have to go there often?
I can take you there if you want to go.
I, I just wonder, is that, I mean, do you guys have to access that often or is that rare for you to go over there?
I mean, we've been trying to clean it up, you know, and, and go through all those records and look through all of them. Because, you know, as you know, we've had to, growing has been an issue, expanding has been an issue. So we've had, they were at one time at the old jail, so we had to take them, you know, to the, we needed some more space. So we are, we, we do go over there often. But to do four things that people may need, you know, just for their faces or genealogy, a lot of people, you know, search for genealogy. It's actually really interesting. If you'd like to see it, I would take you.
I just wonder what happens at the middle, something happens to the middle school.
Exactly.
We've lost that too. But we're not, you're not talking about doing those records?
Not yet, because it's such a large amount. I'm just was trying to get it to where, you know.
More recent stuff?
Yeah, more of that stuff. Most, most of the time when they're searching, it's from the seventies up.
Correct.
And then we have, you know, records in there.
This is from the seventies till now? So I hear it says seventies to nineteen eighty-nine?
Yes. Everything that we have from, from the eighty-nine, ninety is already there.
Is our, already there, okay.
Right, right.
All right.
And it will be, you know, right now you have to pull it up by the book and page, it actually got an index, which means that they can find it by the name. Which will be a lot easier for.
Searchers. Any other questions?
Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you.
In kind of as words, we sort of talked through some of the things, it's nothing that we need a vote on or anything like that. These are just discussion points, just so we kind of understand as we're going through some of this program, the change of programming, exactly what it is that we're trying to do. So some of these kind of big, I know that's sort of a spread number, so it's not per se a one-time, big-ticket item, but a sort of a change of program. Those are the things that drive how we're going to operate, sort of going in the future, that we just want to make sure we're having discussion towards, just to make sure we're all in agreement that that's sort of the way that we want to go. So I, so I can, with the board's permission, I can start to work those figures into the budget to try to see what that's going to look like and kind of reconfigure what we've got. We've got some what you would like to do.
Is, is everybody, I mean, do we have kind of a consensus that this is something we would want to move forward with?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And the next that we have is we have Scott and Nick, that are going to talk about some programming for planning and zoning, water and roads.
All right, I'll, I'll start. So good evening, gentlemen. Basically, what I got to talk about, kind of think back to what happened. It's, it's going to, what we're wanting to do is kind of bring the departments up with technology, catch up time. The way we're doing a lot of our project, a lot of our permitting, a lot of our processing and paperwork are very manual. People are having to handle these documents three, four, five, six times sometimes, just, just to get it through the process. So the first, the, the first thing I want to talk about is, is a, a software implementation. It's a, the company's called Doom Solutions. It's a, I think it's GoSmart, Doom Solutions is the name of the company. And this is something that we, if we, if we started, we're looking to do it between, it'd be the planning zoning, the marshal department and the road department. And what it can do is it can, it can, it allows the citizens to have a lot more accessibility to what they, what they need. So you can go now to get, say, say you want to get a building permit now, you gotta, you gotta go, print it off, manually fill it out, manually turn it in. It gets manually processed through the whole, through the whole process. And then they have to come back in, pay. And it's, it's kind of a, and every time they want an inspection or anything like that, it's, it's calling or emailing or something, you know, whatever. What this software would do, just on, just on the permitting side of the house, it would, it would, this company would go to take all of our applications, all of our permits, and they would go to digitize them. They would go put them on our website and the citizen and the customer would be able to go on, fill those out electronically. We would see on the back end and we would see the completed, they, they would have it, the way, the way I would like to have it set, you like drop down and use like, I'm applying for a new residential house or I'm applying for ag use. Well, you know, we would kind of dictate what, what the options are so we, we can process them quicker. But then on the back end, we, once we see all the information that's there that we need, we can, we can issue the permit, they can go online, they can pay, they can pay it there. But what it'll also do is give you a, a better workflow of everything. This is, this, this would be marshal side of the house, this would be marshal complaints, follow-ups. If they've got to go, you know, that there, there's something to court. And it'll, it'll allow us to, to follow the process from the start to the end. Right now, everything's being done manually, it's being done in Word or Excel. And, and there's, there's going to be stuff that's missed when you're doing it with the amounts coming in nowadays. It's going to give the citizens a much, much easier time and much better access to the services that, that we can provide to them. And it also has the capability, the software itself has a bunch of capabilities. I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's not a whole lot that it can't do. And there, it could potentially expand to other departments right now, we're wanting to kind of stick to these three departments. But it, it'll help our end as well managing it. So when, when, say, say somebody wants to request a building inspection, they would go on to that, they'd enter their permit number and enter the inspection they need. It would automatically generate that request on our end. I would be able to see it, the inspector's be able to see it. Because there would be, there would be unlimited number of users that, you know, we can assign them the username and password. And, and then we can see, okay, at this, this time of day, this inspection was requested. Once, once it's done, the inspector closes it out, this time of day it was finished. And it gives us a way to track better, but it also gives, you know, it's, it's more accountability to us, you know, in saying, okay, well, we, you know, citizens went on and requested it. We're saying we're going to be out there the next day. When do we actually get out there? How quick are we doing this? How, how are we, we're filling these, you know, promises that we've made on a lot of stuff that we're doing?
Right now, with the, like you mentioned the inspection, do they, are they coming in and requesting?
So.
You know, each inspection, are they calling in or?
The desired way is for them to email. We have an email. There's a lot of, a lot of people are calling in, which is not, you know, I'm in and out of office a lot. They're calling into my office and then I'll get the, I'll get the voicemail later. You know, it's, it's one of those things where it, it's very manual.
Sure.
It's very manual. The permitting side of the house is very manual. It's, you know, they come in, they have to manually deliver the, the permit. It's turned in upfront, then it's turned in to me, and then I scan it in. And then we process it, then it's manually filed in the back. Then they have to come in, pick their permit up, the paper copy, that's when they pay. I mean, there's, there's, it's still being done, you know, I don't think, it's still being done quickly. But there's a lot of room for error, human error that can't, you know, can't be avoided on some of this stuff.
Can they, can they upload their documents when they, like when they file, fill out a permit with this system?
With this system, they can.
They, they would, all of, anything you need?
And really the way it's designed is that there would only be, like pretty much four plans would be the only thing they'd have to really upload with the way this system would work. It'd be very minimal of what they would actually have to build, provide them there. And everything else they can just type in, you know, they'd have the general contractor's number, you know, state, state number, their address. It also would link with the tax assessor, the, the, the tax map. So when something is applied for, part, part of the process is the parcel number. That's, that's how the tax assessor tracks new builds, you know. They, they look at parcel numbers, addresses we send, we manually are right now sending over all that stuff. You know, we'll, we'll get an application, we'll stick in their box, they'll pick it up and they'll go and say, okay, we need to go look at this new build of this property. It'll now, what the software can do is automatically trigger, hey, this permit was applied for at this address from this parcel number. And it gives the tax assessor real-time feedback. And it also gives on our end, from the tax assessor's to our end, real-time feedback, it's who the property owner is, any, you know, any divisions that have been done, any surveys that have been done, that sort of stuff. We, we know that, hey, oh, you're trying, you just cut up this house, this piece of land to, you know, three, one-eighth tracks. You're going to have three houses on it. It, it makes it easy on our end to know what's going on too. Because it, and it'll, it'll also keep that information in database. And it can get to the point to where if, if the tax assessor's office wanted it, it could, we could say, hey, you go on Q public, click on that parcel and it'll show you the open permits on it. It'll show you code violations, it'll show you all that that's going on in any particular tract of land. And then you do it from, from the, you know, the zoning requests, conditional use permits, variances, rezoning applications. They'll do the marshal side of the house as well, complaints, follow-ups. The marshal will say, hey, you know, provide me with proof that you've fixed this. They can submit documentation or pictures or whatever. And then, and then like I said, they can, they can, they can go on and, and go on and pay online. But the biggest thing I think is the, just the workflow tracking of it as well. Because that gets very, that gets very hard to do on a daily basis, keeping up with everything that's going on. I think there's two hundred something of them right now open that are, that are in progress right now. You have to go through Excel, manually, and try to make sure you're not missing anything. And this would be able, this would be able to take care of all of that. And then the other, the, the, this, the cost of this, and well, she would be split between the, the marshal's budget and the planning budget. But it, there's a one-time implementation fee of about thirty-four thousand. And then they quoted us eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars as the annual subscription. And I know that, that number kind of sounds like a lot when we think about, we're about, we're at the point where, you know, Frank County Planning Department isn't really a planning department, it's, I'm just me. And in lieu of hiring somebody else and having another salary to pay, that eleven thousand dollars a year that's split really between two departments, the marshal and the, and the planning zoning, you're talking six thousand dollars a year, that lasts a lot cheaper than having to hire somebody to kind of manage this, this workflow that's going on. So that's, that is the big, or one of the big capital expenses for the planning department for next year. The other is the, the update of UDC. And we got a quote from Jerry White, who's been helping us do this. He helped us do the subdivision development and he's helping us rewrite the commercial industrial section of our zoning right now. And the quote from him was right, it was a little over twenty-nine thousand. And that includes, you know, codifying it, includes writing it, that includes, he'll come to the planning commission meetings, help present, he'll present to the board commissioners if, if they be. And it also includes updating the zoning map. So it includes all the GIS work. So currently, we don't have a GIS department. We don't have anybody that handles that on our end. So that cost is included in that and there'll be a lot of, so it'll be a lot, there'll be a lot of work on the zoning map that has to be done when we update this to kind of, you know, get it, get it geared in the direction that we want it to go.
What, what's the overall timeframe for that?
For the UDC, I think he had it, from the time we pulled the trigger, I think he said he could have ready to present in about six to, six to eight months, is what he said.
And, and this is going to look at redoing, I mean, all the zoning regulations?
Right. So it, so UDC, you know, it kind of embeds all, all ordinances, zoning regulations, subdivision, development code. They'll put it all in one document, but it also, at the same time, it updates. That's when we go through and update every single thing that we need updated. Adding stuff like in the, like commercial industrial, you know, right now we just have a CI district. It'll, you know, we can break that down to like media.
But we're going to have that part done in June.
That's kind of the, the updates to the rest of the zoning text that needs to be updated. There's, there's a lot in the zoning text that needs to be updated.
I agree.
And, and give us time to do that. And then it's one document that has everything in it that applies to zoning, you know, building, development, all that kind of stuff. And it's not, it's, it's not really something that I, I feel that we can handle in the house. And that's, that's a big, it's a big project and it's going to take a lot of time to do it. And, and we don't have, we only have a GIS department. So, you know, that, that's something that we can't, we can't handle in the house. And that, like I said, that's going to be, that'd be a twenty-nine thousand dollar upfront cost, but it'd be one time.
Is that, does that include the revision of the CI part that we're doing right now?
That, that does not, because that's going to be, that, that was not planned for.
All right. What's the cost on that?
I can't remember what he quoted me. I think it was, I think it was like six, I think.
And the IBA is going to help with that part of it?
They, they, they have said that they would, they would help with that part of it, yes.
Okay.
But again, this, the, back to the software, like I said, the road department is going to have, wants to look at implementing for them. So I'm going to let him speak on that because what, what this software can do is, is pretty impressive. And it's going to, it's going to get our level of customer service where, where anything. It's, it's kind of lacking right now just because of how manual everything is and how time consuming everything is. So Nick, what was yours?
Thank you all for having me tonight. I'm probably going to reiterate a couple of things that he's already said. But one of the biggest things from public works that we're looking to gain out of this is, you know, we're going to start out at kind of a snail's pace, getting everybody kind of accustomed to using this, this software. But one of the biggest things we'll use it for is work orders that come into the office, you know. I would like for us to have where, you know, our, the people in the office maybe have an icon already pulled up on their computer. As calls come in, all they got to do is type it in. Soon as they submit it, it comes straight to me or whatever department it needs to go to. Hopefully to try to streamline things just a little bit better and a little bit easier. Another great asset to the, to the software would be GIS mapping. Whenever a complaint comes in, as they take an address off of it, it will actually pinpoint it on mapping. So that way, when, whenever I get it or any of my guys in the field, they know exactly where the problem would be. And it's not just for road department, it'll fall into road, water and wastewater. So, you know, not only road complaints, you have a, you know, water, water meter issue, they can actually pinpoint the address to where it is. And to go along with the GIS mapping. And to go along with the GIS mapping, we can also layer it in our road assessments that we've had done through KCI. We can tie that into it. And we can also tie in the water line and wastewater infrastructure mapping that's currently going on right now. So then that way, whenever a complaint comes in on the water side, you know, if they can come in the address and they pull up the layer for the water wastewater side, it can actually pinpoint, it's supposed to be within a couple of inches of where the actual meter is on the property. And, you know, I don't know how many of y'all have, you know, been out there and seen, there's some, a lot of times that water meter might be hard to find on, you know, certain piece of property. So I think as a whole, as a, on the complaint side, I think this will help us out, help streamline the work a little bit better. Also, I, I would like to get it to where as complaints come in, not only can I view it, but if y'all, if y'all wanna view open tickets, where complaints are, the, the process of where we stand on certain complaints that come in, y'all can look at it and can also comment on there, you know, whatever need be. So I think, you know, that, that'd be a big help, not only y'all or the office staff can, it's caused, you know, people call back in and see where things are, they can pull it up. And if we've looked at it, we can leave a comment on there, you know, of where we stand on resolving the issue. Another thing that's gonna be tied into this later is I hope we can get it to a point of asset management. We can kind of find out where the money, you know, what's eating up the most of our money, you know, where we're spending it at. I know one of our biggest expenditures and I know on the road department side is always our rock budget. You know, I would like to get it to where as complaints come in, you know, over a year or two years, we can pull up and see where our problematic areas are in the county and try to figure out, well, what can we do to alleviate that? How can we keep those problems from popping back up? So, you know, that, that's, that's a little bit later on, but I hope we get to that point, you know, as a public works as a whole. The quote I have for the first year of implementation is twenty-three thousand dollars for the public works side, with sixteen thousand for renewal each year. Like I say, the, the, our process now, I think this will greatly, you know, enhance our daily active, you know, workflow every day. Y'all have any questions?
That, that amount is separate from what Scott talked about?
It is, it is. But it's the same, it's the same software.
Same software.
Same company, yeah. And, and what's great about it is I've been looking through different software companies for the public works and Scott and, and Matt have been working, looking for software companies. They came to me and said, hey, we're looking at Duke Solutions or Smartuh. And just so happened is that's the one that I have been looking at too, so it's, it's good that multiple departments can use it. And I'm not so sure that not only just our three departments, we might look into, maybe it'll help, you know, other departments, you know, try to streamline things a little bit better and keep up with the, the workflow.
Where are we at right now with like tagging things like water meters for GPS? I mean, do we?
They're still in the process of doing that, yeah.
Okay.
So they'll be tagging the main lines?
They do, they're doing the, the water, the fire hydrants, inline valves, water meters. They're also, I, I believe the wastewater is tied into it too, to, you know, keep up with the, the infrastructure on that side too. So, you know, I think it'd be handy, I've been out there before where we have a main bus and, you know, first thing you wanna find is how can we isolate this area as fast as possible? Well, with the software, you can see the inline valve to cut them off to isolate those areas better.
Yeah. When, if we sign up for this, is this something that, is it a contract just each year, like for the renewal? Or we have to agree to a certain number of years?
Yes, it's just a one-year, you don't have to do three or five, it's annual.
And it's about sixty thousand annually? What was your amount?
They quote me right at twelve thousand. Eleven something, eleven eight, eleven nine, I think my paper's still up there.
And, you know, and that might be a, an area where we go to them and say, hey, look, we're wanting to do it front. Maybe not three, but maybe more, if we find more, maybe the renewal comes down, or maybe the initial cost comes down.
Now, does this all include the marshal too, or is there a separate?
From, from my side, that includes the marshal.
Okay, all right.
Cause we don't have a marshal right now, I just kind of brought that in.
How much was that initial cost on it?
Twenty-three thousand.
And how much was yours?
Thirty-four, my paper's up there, I think it was thirty-four and some change.
Okay.
Let me see, I'm gonna tell you that information. Thirty-four, nine, eighty-seven, so right at thirty-five thousand.
So about fifty-seven thousand total to do the whole, whole, right now. And do we pay the annual subscription right away, or is that something that picks up the next year?
They said that we could, I mean, we, they said they would work with us on the annual subscriptions, the first year with the implementation costs. They said we can break that, that annual subscription up.
All right, like a monthly?
They said we did a monthly, quarterly, however, however we wanted to, but they said they would, they would work with us on that, uh, the annual subscription.
All right. Commissioners, do you all have questions?
Has, um?
Say something like, where the state's water comes off the state route. A prime example of that is one oh-six at Soseby Road. When it comes off that state route on to Soseby Road, there's really nowhere for it to go.
Right.
So it floods, it floods Soseby Road. Is there something maybe?
Well, I tell you, we've had a couple of instances just in the last couple of months where the state and the county have been working together to resolve issues like that. So we can look into that. I, I know we, we looked into Atkinson Bridge Road, we resolved that, and Tom Watson Andrews, it was a similar issue, we, we had that resolved. So, you know, I can talk to the county, the, the local DOT and I'm sure we can, we can look into that.
An eighteen inch pipe can't take what, a thirty-six or a twenty-four? I mean, common sense tells you that ain't gonna work downstream, and that's what's happening up there.
Okay.
And, and the county will work the road, then it comes a big rain, it washes all the gravel that the county's put on there. But the county's doing their job, but it's coming off a state route.
And, and they've been very helpful with the last two instances we've had, so I'm sure I can get with them, we can probably get something resolved on that road as well.
I mean, it's, you know, every time it rains, I mean, that pipe, it can't take it.
Right.
I bet it's.
And we've, we've had a couple where we've had undersized pipes and we're trying to work through those as well, yeah.
If we, if we do this, does this require us to get more technology, devices, mobile devices, laptops?
On my end it will. We'll have to have, you know, some type of iPad or a similar device to put in the trucks and maybe some type of mobile hotspot.
Okay.
If one, if one on our end, the marshal already has a, a, a mobile laptop that he can carry that, that has, he can get internet with. All of our dispatchers already have iPads. And then from my end, I'll have the, the back end at the office that I will give you.
Okay. Other questions? Oh, as part of the budget, have you considered these at, at all as far as adjustments, or is this just strictly based on what we've?
So I, so I haven't factored this into it, there's gonna be some creative ways we can look at how that is, cause there might be, so for this particular, there might be opportunity to pay with up here's money or something like this. So there might be opportunity within that, so, so I at least have looked at sourcing the financing side of things, but not putting it in the actual figures.
Okay.
So at least once we kind of, if we decide we wanna put it in the actual figures, then I can kind of maneuver of how we need to do things.
Is it, is this, I mean, do we feel like this is something in the direction where we go?
I think with the amount of growth.
I think it would be good to definitely dig in and see what we can do with it. And if you're getting complaints on it, I promise you I ain't gonna look at it. I'll let you handle those complaints.
And, and just one quick, one question that you probably have, I know we're kind of mentioning the internet that will need that. So we do have some plans with the provider looking at internet over these next few years from funding that they got. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that on Tuesday, of what, what that provider's looking at doing over the course of these next three years as far as internet service, uh, provider in the county and looking at broadband and whatnot. We do also have money that we'll receive over basically now, in this next twelve, thirteen months, that can be used towards broadband ourselves from the second wave of the carriers act. So we have opportunity, I think, to support those items. Obviously we do need to look at technology from can we handle it and what's gonna be the support on that side since, you know, we don't have the in-house IT department. But those would be things that we can work through, it's something that we wanna proceed with.
Good, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys.
And thank, thank you to staff for picking up some of the work off of me. But that's everything that we're gonna talk about capital today. Just a couple of quick things, you know, to bring home. But just talking about personnel requests, we currently don't have any personnel requests processed for this upcoming budget. The only difference that we will have upcoming budget is we did hire an accountant, or I guess a venture level accountant for the office. And we'll kind of work through that, talk through that a little bit more in upcoming meetings as well and what that's gonna mean for us. There was also just talk within the retreat, looking at an IT department in some kind of realm. We don't have to necessarily talk about that the second, but that's something that we're gonna need to talk about probably in the next hearing. Just to sort of think through, is that something we need to formulate? Cause that is something that we wanna proceed on within this next budget. It, it doesn't have to be, there's options we can look at, of looking at hiring within the budget, looking at hiring at half budgets of January. There's options we can look at that as far as cost structure, but we would have to build a department structure, so that would change the way that, that's recorded to you. That would make it work, you have a fifteen thirty-five, a five fifteen thirty-five set of line items if we decided we wanted to do that. But we're, we're not pressed into service with that right now, so we don't, we don't have to do it, but, but it might be something that we wanna discuss within the next hearings. Another thing that I did just put in thinking personnel wise is just the recommendation that we might wanna think about the possibility of sort of a code enforcement department. That's, I guess, as it says, we're sort of thinking of coverage, the manual, the nature of the job. Are we gonna be able to do it with one person, we're talking about covering two hundred plus square miles with a person, with one singular person? So I think in the future we might wanna just sort of make that a consideration as we're just looking at structure and how we wanna do things. There's options with that as well, and again, this is not something we need to decide today or within this budget cycle. But just something that I think we need to think about as far as how we're operating and what we're doing to operate, just to alleviate some of the issues that we do have.
With regards to the code enforcement, is that not something that can be incorporated into the marshal? Are we talking about something different?
So, so yeah, it would be something, I guess, I guess in my mind structurally, it'd be something to where maybe you have, I don't know, two code enforcement officers that report to the marshal. Or something in that kind of realm, that would be something we'd have to work for, if that's something we wanna get to in the future. But it would be all.
Under his umbrella, okay.
Yeah, that's right. Any personal questions?
Not really for the budget, have we hired a marshal yet?
We interviewed next Tuesday.
Next two things, maybe.
Okay.
So we are getting pretty close to that. Other than Mitch had two for the presentation for Scott, I do have that included within his budget, that current, of looking at that, uh, UDC. So right now in the budget, so we look under five, seven, four, ten line items within his department. I believe I have there twenty-five thousand dollars for professional services that should be under. We'll have to just increase that to sort of match what that number is, that was based off of a projection that we had at that particular time.
Good.
Just to mention. Other personnel item is that you'll notice within the chief executive manager's budget, about thirteen twenty set of line items, that you do see a couple of extra items within that, so one of them being salary adjustments. Should be about third or fourth line, I believe, in that set. It'll get expenditure budget of five thirteen twenty. So it's gonna say salary adjustments and what that is, is just basing a projection of COLA at about three point five percent or four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Well, located in one area and that from the time that we say that we wanna do the COLA at that rate, we'll spread it to the departments at where at the time frame we say we wanna do that, so whether it be in July or January, whatever the case may be. But, but that would be in the budget for right now as far as increases. And we talked about in the retreat that will work towards merit increases and some type of system, getting department heads accustomed to that this fall to then implement next year.
Any questions? Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna just real quickly talk about this, just talk about millet rates. So we are looking at millet rate and what that does mean for us. And it's hard to see in this, but I'm pretty sure everybody knows just from twenty twenty, this is going through millet rate, school incorporated, unincorporated and IBA. So with the school we go that were at seventeen, they did have an increase last year from fifteen point eight. We actually had a rollback from eleven point nine six within the incorporated down to eleven point seven. And then we had a rollback within the unincorporated at ten point eight one three down to ten point five five three. With the IBA staying steady, point two five within the millet rate. That's just a little bit of that history to it. So we'll talk about it a little bit more in the coming meetings, just about your thoughts towards millet, that's not a decision that we can make today. But that'll be something that we're gonna just take a look at of whether we stay the same, whether we roll back and what that can mean. I have a, just a representation of what that looks like up here upcoming. This is just looking at our neighboring counties, so that we kind of know this is just pretty likely by that neighbor's, uh, situation. The comparable millet rates are, so we can kind of see with us, we're about the fourth within the unincorporated. We're about third, I believe it is, within incorporated and I believe we are number three, sorry, four, I believe, within the schools. So that's just an overview of all of those rates that occur minus IBA, of course. Just mentioned something, I know we've talked about this about home sales within the county. This is just looking at dry counties, it's not a full representation of what that can mean for us. But it just kind of shows, of course, within the four counties that are considered dry counties within Georgia, just what their millet rates are in comparison to ours. We are pretty comparable when you're looking at the overall millet rates of those counties. Like I said, it's not a full representation, you know, there could be other factors as to why maybe they have higher millet rates. So it isn't all encompassing to say that we are on that track. That's not the full representation, I'm just to give some comparative analysis. So this is just another look at what our current millet rates are. Essentially this is looking at what the home value and what someone paying taxes would be with those millet rates. I know it's a little bit small, hard to see, but if you start at the bottom of looking at the home value, about a hundred thousand. They would pay about eleven fifty-eight in total taxes, incorporated about eleven twelve, unincorporated. And this is, again, with our current millet rate structure, home at a hundred fifty thousand dollars, sixteen sixty-eight, unincorporated, about seventeen thirty-seven, incorporated. A two hundred thousand dollar home would be about twenty-two, twenty-four, unincorporated, and about twenty-three sixteen, incorporated. I know these are just kind of whole numbers, so I mean, it's not gonna be exact to what someone may actually pay. But this is just the representation of what are those rate looks like for citizens. This next slide just gives a representation of if we were to do a point two five rollback within the incorporated only. And just depending on what we wanna do, again, we won't make that decision today. We could, we could talk about if there's any particular models we wanna look at, but we can kind of roll through whatever models that you'd like to see. And I can send that to you, so you can see what the effect of a rollback essentially would be. I can tell you basically what the about quarter rollback is gonna be about, twenty dollars, fifteen and ten dollars, when you're talking about two hundred, one fifty and a hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollar home. So you can kind of think about it in those terms from those whole numbers, will be what that means if you just roll back point two five on one millet rate. Any questions about any of the topics or anything in particular that you would like to see? You can always email me for any models, millet rate wise as well. But, but that would just be something ongoing that we'll have to just talk about and see where it's gonna be. As far as those rates, if you wanna look at equalization, what that can mean. We probably would maybe look at a, a multi-year model, give or take, or also bringing the millet rates to the same number. I, we can look at what that means if it were to be in its entirety in one year. But we can look and see what that also means over the course of multiple years, just for the sake of kind of seeing that analysis and making the best decision that you feel would be there in, in those cases. I, I would probably just say as far as when we're looking at that, you know, with caution of looking at millet rate, you know. I, my personal opinion would be we just wanna be careful as far as if we're taking deep chunks of millet rate. Could you kind of see within the analysis of what the schools was and no blame to the school whatsoever? could you kind of see within the analysis of what the schools was, uh, and no blame to the school whatsoever, uh, but you can kind of see where you have the big dip, uh, but then needing to go back with a bit of increase could, could be a concern. So there's things just a factor in, uh, would be the point of when we're looking at milage rate, and if we're looking at increases and or decreases.
What, what I ask, uh, we, we need to think about that because, you know, unfortunately, we do the milage after we do the budget. But what I asked Mr. Turner to do is, is come up with some projections, once we know more, what it would be if we leave it the same, if we roll back to accept any inflationary increase, or if we did a quarter mill cut. And within the cut, you know, would we do, would we cut unincorporated and incorporated the same? A quarter mill, or look at, like he talked about, just pulling it off of the incorporated side to bring them closer to the unincorporated? But that way.
Incorporated being the cities.
Right. That way we have several, uh, you know, options to look at. But he's right, you know, we really don't, don't, won't know anything in more detail until we get closer to having a digest, and that's probably a couple months away.
Yeah, so we'll have the digest about mid-June, so it's a little tougher, and I know it's kind of hard with the way our budget falls to where, you know, we obviously have to approve it, uh, no later than the end of June, uh, to then try to get that and sort of put that all together. So, uh, so I know it's a little bit tougher in those cases, but if we just think about how we wanna do that and what that looks like, we can look at the models and see sort of, it, it just in general, like what I have here, what that means. Uh, that'll give you a little bit of an idea, uh, but then once we get a little bit closer, then we're able to model out exactly what the numbers would be as far as if there was a decrease, increase versus assessed values, if they, uh, increased or decreased. Uh, but, uh, but we'll just have to kind of, kind of broadly look at that for the time being, or it's about another month-ish.
But if y'all, in, in the meantime, you can, uh, you know, if you have specific requests, just email, and, and he, he can give you more information. Do any of you guys have more questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Turner. The, the next, uh, part of the, of the next item on the agenda tonight is public comment, and this would be public comment just related to the budget. We, we don't, we won't have an open, a public comment section for other questions. So, we're gonna open the floor for that, uh, this is gonna give citizens an opportunity to ask questions about the budget as we presented it tonight, and we will have another budget hearing next week as well. So is there anyone here who would like to make a comment about the budget? This is not a question and answer session, but if you have questions, you can write those down and we'll get back with you. So when you come up, start off, please give us your name and address.
Uh, my name is Maggie West, uh, I live at six zero four one Stone Bridge Road, Farms of LaGuardia. I'm the branch manager of the Royston Illinois Libraries. Um, my main reason for being here today is I just wanted to thank you all for the healthy goodness over the last few years, especially last year, as we faced, you know, kind of a economic crisis. So I really just wanted to come and thank y'all in person.
Okay, thank, we appreciate that. We, uh, we, we value the library system and that's important to us, but we appreciate that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have public comments they'd like to make? Okay, Mr. Turner, do you have any announcements?
Um, just an announcement, uh, as I mentioned it, that we will have another budget hearing at five thirty on Tuesday, uh, prior to the work session. Uh, so, but the budget will be, you know, available tomorrow in the office, uh, so I'll get it printed out. Uh, so if anybody, uh, in the public does want to see the budget, um, then call the offices or come by the offices. Uh, so we really appreciate the civic engagement, uh, with everything happening in the county, uh, and we hope that everybody will be just as engaged going forward.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, I just wanna remind everybody on Monday, June the seventh, uh, twenty twenty-one, the board's gonna hold a public hearing and a regular board meeting, and this will begin at five o'clock. That's a departure from our usual practice of beginning at five thirty, but that's just to accommodate more people and more public comment at both our hearing and our regular meeting. Uh, the purpose of the hearing will be to receive public comment for or against zoning items, and one of those zoning items is the pilgrims rendering plant, uh, proposed rendering plant, pet food ingredient plant, and the board will take action on those meetings at, uh, or I'm sorry, on those items at the regular meeting that follows the conclusion of the public hearing. We, we have advertised that this meeting will be at the Ag Center, at the high school, as was the planning and zoning, but we are looking into other options, uh, that are more suited to a crowd that size. As soon as we make a determination of any change, we will announce that as quickly as possible, so that everyone knows where to go. Do you, any commissioners have, Commissioner Wester, do you have any announcements?
Uh, just a big thank you to our county manager, uh, to our rec department director Randall Galey, and our assistant rec director Spencer Reisner, for a great event Saturday morning. Uh, it wa-, it was, it was great to be able to honor such a good man and, and honoring Michael Mayfield and seeing his name on that gem. So thank y'all for what you did.
Thank you. Mr. Schwellers?
Um, I want to extend a thank you to you for being a big part of that as well, and, you know, I know that it meant a lot to you and your family, and it was a great event, so I was glad to be a part of it.
Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
I have everything now.
Commissioner Frank? Alright. There, there was one other item I wanted to mention. Uh, in the last couple of weeks, uh, one of our local attorneys, Margaret Dial, passed away, and she has been, uh, active in county government, local government, uh, in the court system, in the juvenile court system for a long time, uh, and she'll be missed, and we just wanna note her passing. Okay, if there's nothing else at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Wester's made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Foster, seconded the motion, all in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. The motion will carry four to zero, and we stand adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming tonight.